All right, I have six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. If you would, please rise and recite the Pledge of Legions with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Davidson and Franklin are excused. Mayor's airing.
Present. All right, thank you. We have a quorum. We have some ceremonial or aceremonial matter this evening. I'll have chief come up. We have a introduction and penning of police lieutenant.
Sure.
Good evening, Board of Aldermen, Mayor, and Mr. Ratliff. Tonight, I would like to introduce you the new investigations lieutenant, Lieutenant Tim Michelson. He began his law enforcement career with HPD in 2015 and has quickly advanced through the ranks. In 2018, he was promoted to corporal, and in 2024, he achieved the rank of sergeant. Throughout his career, Lieutenant Michelson has served as a school resource officer, a dare officer, drug recognition expert, field training officer, FTO coordinator, and central square administrator. He has been recognized as HPD Officer of the Year in both 2019 and 2024. Accounting Lieutenant Michelson this evening is his mother Susan, his stepfather Ed, and his father John. Lieutenant Michelson will be officially pinned this evening by his mother Susan.
She laughed out the car while he laughed as he came back.
Yeah. I was gonna bring up a couple of names.
Yeah.
I'll eat.
There you go.
It seems like you're up here like every month. So what's next month? What's he gonna accomplish for next month? What's the goal?
The internal.
Get you your tape?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. You also forgot to mention you did win the chili cook-off.
I did, yes, I did.
I forgot about that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
And we'll let you say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks to my team members for supporting me. Thank you to my parents for supporting me, even though they don't like what our job entails. It's a little dangerous, but they've been supportive the whole time, so thank you very much, everyone.
Awesome, congratulations. Everybody have more pictures.
Yes.
Y'all know the routine now. Are you all ready? Chris, you wanna shoot right off the bat?
Oh, sure.
All right, thank you. Had no public participation this evening. All right. We do the approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen Minutes Regular Meeting, June 16, 2025. Those are in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me. All right, those will stand. First up on the agenda items tonight, we have Council Bill 33.
Council Bill 33, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, to authorize the city administrator to accept the annual audit for the year ending December 31, 2024 by KPM CPAs and establishing an effective date.
All right, thank you. And Jeremy, were you gonna speak to that, or?
I certainly can't.
All right. We know you can.
I don't know. I, no. This is an effort that is undertaken by most of the county staff, including Kim, Sandora, Courtney, everybody, you know, that is in finance. Tammy also participates. So I can't take anything away from their work and the efforts of KPM to bring this in front of you tonight, and I'll turn it over to John.
All right, John, come on up. Thanks, Jeremy.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, hi. Is the button on? Did you leave the button on?
Might tilt it down just a little bit.
Okay, there we go.
Maybe that's better.
There we go. Thank you.
Well, I will try and keep my comments very brief this evening because it can turn into quite a numbers game going through one of these big reports like this and kind of causes people to glaze over. So if you do have questions, I will say that you can contact our office or work through Kim to get with us about any questions that you have on this as you work your way through the report itself, or if something comes up and you just have a question. We're available year-round and willing and able to answer any questions that might come up. So feel free to reach out. We're here to help answer any questions that you have. So we'll try and keep this brief. We're gonna start on page 11 of the Audit Booklet, and that is the Independent Auditor's Report, and this is all for the year ended December 31, 2024. For those that may not know, my name is John Cummings. I'm with KPM CPAs out of Springfield. I'm an audit shareholder with the firm, and so we'll get into this presentation a bit. It opens with the opinions on your financial statements, and it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the discreetly presented component unit, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri as of December 31, 2024." That is an unmodified or a clean opinion and the best possible result. So that is a good job. This means that your financial statements are presented in a way that is materially correct, and you guys do go a little bit above and beyond some others in that you do the whole annual comprehensive financial report, and so there's a lot of extra information that's contained in here from a historical perspective that you can get into and do a lot of like 10-year look-back on financial information for different areas of the city and how it's performing. So there's a lot to digest in this, I will concede. I also want to thank everybody, of course, that helped with the audit. It was, I'm sure, not a fun experience on their part. It's easy as the auditor to say, "I need this, 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 and this," and it is a different thing to be the person being asked to provide all of those different things, and I'm sure is a bit nerve-wracking, although I know they try to do a very good job. So even at the best we can do, a lot of times when somebody's looking, we get nervous that, well, what don't we know? And so it can be a stressful process, and we ask for a lot of things while they're doing their normal daily functions, and they were very helpful and considerate and easy to work with, and we appreciate all of that. So back into the report here, the basis for the opinion on the financials is that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. We did help in preparing your financial statements, that's common, and what was done last year. So we basically put the financial packet that you see all together, give it to city's management, they review it, approve it, and we get through any questions that they have, and then it's finalized. So this is the form of it being finalized. There is an emphasis of matter paragraph this year, and I wanted to call that out because that's not normal. Basically had to adopt the new accounting guidance of GASB 101, compensated absences. It basically changed how that liability is calculated and resulted in basically a restatement as a result of implementing that standard. And the other thing that they did that was nice, and you might recall this from last year's presentation, GASB 100 specified how you would go about showing that correction of accounting change. So we're gonna get into that here in just a minute. On the next page here, page 12, is the responsibility of management for the financial statements. Ultimately, management does take responsibility for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So ultimately, this becomes the city's document. So any questions on any of that so far? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna skip over to page 29, and what you're gonna see on page 29, I believe, is the governmental funds, revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances, and this is covering the general fund, the emergency services fund, the park and recreation fund, the desk service fund, and then what you see is non-major funds. Those are considered to be not as important, not as big, and so they get grouped. For your general fund, you had total revenues of $14,902,200. That is up about $5.5 million. Now, the reason for that mostly is your intergovernmental revenue category, which rose by about $4 million from the previous year. And on the expense side of things, expenses were up about $6.6 million at $15,495,867, and that's again partly because of the grant expenses that were going on. And then skipping on down here, you have transfers that net to a transfer end of $1,486,656, and gives you a gain for the year of $891,009. And then you can see here that there's some stuff you maybe haven't seen in the past relating to restatements and whatnot. This is basically how GASB 100 makes us present this, but your general fund did end up increasing for the year by $891,009 and has ending balance of $34,963,962, of which about $21 million is restricted for capital projects. So overall, I would say general fund's performing fairly well. Don't wanna get into all of the funds unless you really want me to. No? Okay. Well, we'll look at it in total here. Across all of your governmental funds, you did have an increase of about $1.5 million for the year, and that's a good thing. That shows that you're paying attention to what's gonna be coming in and what's gonna be going out and budgeting accordingly. So I would say keep up the good work and diligence on that. There was a restatement here for change in reporting entity that results, it's from the aquatic center moving into a governmental area, just so that it not be determined that it would have to support its own operations essentially. So fits more cleanly under park and rec, so that's where it is now. So all total fund balances for your governmental funds total out to $38,875,613. So quite a substantial amount there, but do recall that about $21 million is restricted for capital. Okay, we're gonna turn over to page 32 and look at kind of the same statement for your business-type activities, which include the enterprise fund, the CWSS fund, and the non-major fund, which is your refuse fund. So on all of these, I think the most important thing to look at is that line that says operating income or loss, and what you'll see there is that you see operating income all the way across. And believe it or not, that is not normal in municipalities because a lot of municipalities have a hard time managing the expenses versus the charge for service in order to generate an operating income. In other words, the rates that they're charging are not covering the cost of providing the service, and so I would say there's a bit of a commendation there for the city in monitoring rates and also controlling expenses in order to generate a operating income in each of the utilities. Kind of going down the page, you can see that the net change in net position is an increase of $2,718,648, and across all of your utilities, you end with a total net position of $49,460,800. So overall, pretty strong there as well. Any questions on any of that? Okay. We're gonna skip way over, which everybody can applaud about. We're gonna go to page 92, which is the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And what people may not understand is that we do a financial audit, but we also, when expenditures of federal grants crosses $750,000, we have to do what's called a single audit and look at your grant expenditures and certain things that the Fed wants us to review. And we ended up having to test three major programs, and that maybe doesn't sound like a lot, but I assure you, there is a lot of work involved in auditing three major federal programs because there are a lot of compliance requirements and red tape and things that you just have to do and hoops to jump through, and we're checking to make sure that all the red tape was utilized and the hoops were jumped through. So it's a lot of opportunities to trip, kind of put in lay terms. But we did test the Airport Improvement Program, the 20.106 number. You had total expenditures there of $4,167,977. We also tested your COVID-19 coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds of $1,945,557, and then your FEMA hazard mitigation grant of $828,65. And so of the total, that's about $6.9 million, or 89% of your federal awards were tested. So that's more coverage than we would ordinarily want, but when a program itself is over $750,000, it's considered to be a type A program, and it has to be audited if it hasn't been audited in each of the, or one of the three previous periods, basically. So not ideal to have that much coverage, but I guess you have confidence at this point. So the response, or the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs can be found on page 94, and this is basically a summary of auditor's results. It gives you kind of a snapshot of how the audit went, both on the financial side and on the federal awards side. And on the financial side, you see the unmodified opinion that I referenced earlier, but then also internal control over financial reporting. You'll see there's no material weaknesses identified in your internal controls and no significant deficiencies identified that needed to be reported. Also, there's no non-compliance material to the financial statements that was noted. On the federal awards side, also no material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies reported, and as such, you get an unmodified opinion on each major federal program. That is also the best possible result. There were no audit findings disclosed that are required to be reported under 2 CFR or 200.516A, and you can see the list of programs that were audited there and also that $750,000 threshold I mentioned. You see here that it says auditee qualified as a low-risk auditee, question mark, and we say no. And that might make you think, well, we're high-risk, but we didn't have any findings. How does that make any sense? And basically, you have to have an audit, a single audit every year for the three preceding years essentially, to be a low-risk auditee and have no findings. So this would be unusual because you did not have a single audit last year. So that's why you are not considered to be a low-risk auditee. The only thing that really changes as a result of being a low-risk auditee is that the percentage of coverage we would have to hit would drop to 20%. Otherwise, it's 40%. So this is telling the Fed that we're testing at least 40%, and as mentioned before, we've blown that way out of the water. So all good on all of that. Any questions on single audit? Okay, you guys are quite a bunch. I'll take it. So, all right, well, with that, we're gonna turn over to the management letter and talk about your emergency services fund just a little bit. Well, it would be like 118? So this is basically items that are just for consideration, I suppose. It's not really about findings and recommendations and such, even though it's kind of worded in that way. Obviously, these are things we're observing, and we're just trying to give you some food for thought. So that's the context for this particular letter, and so consider this just a matter we're bringing to your attention. And in your emergency services fund, cash was overdrawn by about $1.2 million in that fund, and it's kind of been this way for several years, I believe, because last year's amount was about $1,039,000 that it was overdrawn by. And the reason this can happen is that the city uses a pooled cash system where basically it's one account spread across the ledger in the different funds, and so all these resources are basically in the same account. And so if expenses in a particular fund surpass what's coming in plus the cash that was on hand, you can wind up with negative cash. Now, on emergency service fund, there's a timing of collections thing as well as a collectability thing that results in the costs sometimes outweighing what you're actually gonna, actually be able to bring in in revenue. And this has kind of happened over time and built up over time, and the general fund ultimately ends up having to subsidize it. That's kind of the nuts and bolts of it all, is that the general fund has to subsidize it. And the reason why we're kind of bringing this up is it might be a good idea just operationally to go ahead and do the transfer and kind of zero out the cash, because what's also happening is while you have this negative cash over here, you know you're gonna have to subsidize it from general fund, but general fund's cash is inflated from what it really would be if you went ahead and subsidized. So just from an operation standpoint, if you're looking at cash reserves and that kind of thing, it kind of gives a false impression of what's in your general fund, and so something to consider, or at least keep in mind as you're going through budgeting process and day-to-day operations, that that negative amount is hanging out over there. So anyway, any questions on that? Okay. On the next page, kind of the same deal, talking about emergency services fund, and there was a deficit in the emergency services fund, and so the deficit was $589,367, and so it does need something to happen over there, or at least be aware that something's gonna probably need to be done over there. Definitely, I would say warrants some additional scrutiny as to the charge for service, the collectability, and the related expenses, because I'm not sure that's sustainable for the long haul. Just outside looking in.
We have been scrutinizing that very hard over the past two years.
I have heard rumors that this is a topic of conversation regularly, and so I'm confident that the city's leadership is trying to address it, but I understand that big wheels turn slow. And so just consider this, we are in your corner and in favor of you addressing it, so if we can help give any guidance or thoughts on it, you know, feel free to contact us. We have to take a look at it, too. Now, we're on to the easy stuff. GASB Statement 102 deals with certain risk disclosures. It is a new standard that will go into effect as of January 1, 2025, so it's currently in effect. And basically, it just deals with concentrations or constraints in your funding situation. So think of it in this way, if you had a large industry in town and it was the main employer in town, you would probably have to say something about, if that left, what would happen to the city? And so this standard kind of puts some guardrails on places to talk about that kind of stuff. If there was gonna be a major sequestration in taxes or something like that, or you lost out on a big grant that you had already started a project on, that might be a constraint, and it would fall into this category as well. GASB Statement Number 103 deals with financial reporting model improvements, and it's just basically a catch-all for some things that the GASB wanted to change relating to the management's discussion and analysis, unusual and infrequent items, proprietary fund statements, and the budget to actials, and it's in effect for January 1, 2026. And then GASB Statement 104, disclosure of certain capital assets. Basically, it calls for separation of leased assets or subscription-based IT arrangements. You separate those out in the footnote, so this is not gonna be all that impactful to the city, but it is also in effect for January 1, 2026. So some changes on the horizon, but nothing that's earth-shattering. So I think that is pretty much what I have. The next page does talk about some upcoming things with the GASB, but I'll let you read through that on your own time. I'm sure I've taken enough and up of your time on GASBs. So any questions about the audit?
I think you did a fine job there, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
That's no questions, huh?
I'll take the no questions, I guess. But if any rise would.
Although you did offer, you know, you might get them over the next several weeks.
That's fine.
Yeah.
We'll be here, so. All right.
Yeah, I would just say we haven't had much time to review this, and so I might've had many questions, but I didn't really have much time to look at it, so.
Well, do feel free to reach out if questions do arise. We're happy to try and help clear up anything that you might have a question about.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns on this resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Milner to approve. Roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 33 is now Resolution 2025-13. Next up, we have Council Bill 34.
Council Bill 34, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contractual agreement with Integrated Environmental Solutions LLC for reconnaissance-level architectural survey of approximately 159 acres comprised of the area identified as Phase 2 for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri.
All right, thank you, Christina.
Try to keep it so detailed in the title that there's really not a whole lot else I can say, but this is the second part of our environmental survey update. This is gonna be over a period of years, four phases total. When we sent it out originally, we had a lower amount in the budget, had to go back to ship-o and ask for additional funds because both the bids we did receive came in higher. The additional funding, basically an additional amended grant agreement that was an increase on the federal side of $10,806 and an increase on the local side of $7,204. Total amount for the project is $4310. And so we're asking for approval to enter into this grant agreement to move this project forward.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Christina on that? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner to approve. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 34 is now Resolution 2025-14. Next up, we got a public hearing. I'm gonna open a public hearing. It's open for a special use permit for an event venue, commercial, recreational facility on property located at 101 and 103 South Lexington Street. So that is open. Christina, I think you got that one, too?
So again, kind of give you a high level, and then we'll get into what the actual application. The applicant is proposing to rehab the existing building at 101 and 103 South Lexington Street. They're gonna be creating four new loft apartment units, two for each building, office and retail spaces, and event venue, commercial, recreational facility space. So it's the recreational facility event venue space that requires special use permit. It's, I believe, the floor plan shows as being 938 square feet. Under the previous action section of the staff report, I do want to draw out the point that it, both special use permit for the Davis, formerly Beck Event Center, and the newer event venue that's under Constructional and Commercial Street were approved for 20 years. Additionally, I'm just gonna hit certain pieces of the history. Additionally, I'm just gonna hit certain pieces of the history. December 4th, 2023, the Board of Aldermen approved various code amendments by ordinance 3677, which included establishing definition for event venue and changes to land use table that specified that an event venue is allowed use with an approved special use permit in districts CBD 1, CBD 2, and C2. And on August 19th, 2024, the Board of Aldermen had another round of code amendments. Ordinance 3702 included establishing definitions for live entertainment and commercial recreational facility that, again, changes to the land use table specify that a commercial recreational facility is allowed use with an approved special use permit in districts A, CO, C1, CBD 1, CBD 2, C2, M1, and M2. On June 18th of 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission heard this application and recommended approval to the Board of Aldermen, seven to zero. Underneath the analysis section, I'm gonna kind of drill down there, the zoning is the downtown core business CBD 1 district, and the use of both the event venue and commercial recreational facility, as I just mentioned, are allowed with a special use, approved special use permit. These uses are deemed appropriate for this district and this location. There are no additional requirements related to either of these types of special uses. Go ahead and read through the definitions that are there in the staff report. The event venue is a facility used primarily for the purpose of leasing or renting for private functions on a temporary basis, such as meetings, banquets, weddings, anniversaries, and similar celebrations. The commercial recreational facility is considered an indoor and/or outdoor commercial establishment or place of business primarily engaged in the provision of sports, entertainment, or recreation for participants or spectators. And of course, recreation in this section does not include the adult entertainment section. Also below there, I include the definition for live entertainment, as that is relevant as well. It's a use which includes any of the following activities, and as you see in the applicant's attachments, they hit on some of these, either principally or as accessory uses, performances by musicians, dancers, stand-up comedians, or other performance artists, karaoke, live bands, or musical acts, or the amplification of recorded music slash entertainment by live disc jockeys. I do briefly, and I do stress briefly, touch on the parking section here. The reason is, well, Section 405-290 states that there's no off-street parking required in this zoning district. The city is currently in the process of working with a consultant to study the parking and the traffic in the downtown area, which includes reviewing existing and proposed uses to make sure that there is adequate parking area to serve those uses. So this has been shared with a consultant to let them know, hey, this is the use that's being proposed, and let them know if they have any concerns. They have not addressed anything else. Want to go next to the conference of plan. It shows the area, of course, is historic downtown. The proposed uses are supported by this place type in the conference of plan by the following three statements. Continuation of variety of uses desired in the historic downtown, especially encouraging experiential commercial uses on the first floor of a building such, and buildings that are directly located on the square, sorry, such as restaurants, cultural retail destinations, and event spaces, is actually specifically called out. Seasonal pop-up retail is also strongly encouraged as temporary use for vacant lots or parking lots. I added this because while this is not a vacant lot, per se, and it is definitely not a parking lot, the building itself has been vacant for a number of years. And strategic coordination amongst businesses and building owners to promote tourism, place-making, and continued growth are one of the key priorities that are identified under this place type within the conference of plan. Staff recommends approval of the proposed special event venue slash commercial recreational facility with the following two conditions. All appropriate state and local liquor licensing requirements shall be met, and two, the special use permit shall be granted for a period of 20 years from the date of approval. If the applicant wishes to transfer ownership to a second party, the applicant must resubmit the application for a special use permit to the city prior to transfer ownership. This is consistent with the other two event venue locations.
Okay. Thank you, Christina. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this now? All right. I think you know the routine now, name, address, all that, you know?
Yeah, birth certificate, social security number. No, my name's Colt Putoff. My wife over here is Courtney Putoff. If anybody has any questions regarding this, I think I kind of go from there.
Okay. All right.
Specific details, I guess.
Gotcha, yep. Any questions for Christina, or?
So the part of the building that faces the square, it shows the tenant spaces, is that right?
Yes.
We don't know specifically what that.
Don't know specifically yet. Yeah, we're gonna basically white-box them at the beginning and try to get tenants to lease the two spaces in 101 and 103 on the first floor, and then upstairs on both of those sides, we're gonna put two apartments on each, 101 and 103.
Okay.
So they'll be separated, kind of if you took the building in half from east to west, where the roofline drops down to that lower section where the old, while the grill sign is still hanging.
I was convinced in what your, what the front of the building would look like facing, like it won't look like it's still a vacant building and all.
No, no. We plan to go through and put all new storefront glass on the front of the building, new facade on that, anything that needs to be repaired, and then essentially, you know, whatever tenants and stuff that we're looking to get in there.
Okay. Glad to see it.
Me, too. I'm excited.
Yep.
Someday.
We're getting there, right?
We're getting there.
Yeah.
Piece by piece.
Any other questions? No? Anybody else from the public want to speak? All right. No? All right. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So we will move on now to the first reading of Council Bill 35.
Council Bill 35, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a special use permit for an event venue commercial recreational facility on property located at 101 and 103 South Lexington Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you, and that'll come back to our next meeting on July 21st for the second reading. All right, next item we have is, and this is an administrative Council Bill 36.
Council Bill 36, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri directing city staff to transfer the land known as Height Park located in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri as a part of the Cedar Crossing Development Project.
Christina, I think that's you again, right? Yeah? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I know we talked about this when we went through the rezoning process, and then again with development agreement. This was part of the discussions we had at that time in lieu of the park cash fee that we normally would have there to be able to transfer the land to the developer for them to provide maintenance on that property and not charge that fee. And so we're asking for approval to finish the steps we need to do to make that happen. They've got their first final plat has already gone through process. It has not been finalized signature-wise. We are hoping to see the revisions we needed coming soon, but I do know they're working on a second plat as well, and I expect that we'll be seeing those very soon.
All right. Any questions for Christina on this? Alderman Turner.
I said that part, it's been developed, what, was it five properties, right?
I'm wondering if you're mixing this up with Blueberry.
Yeah, that's Blueberry.
Okay. Never mind.
Never mind? All right.
Hill Park.
So again, this is an administrative, administrative reading here, Council Bill 36. If there's no questions, I'll entertain.
Make a motion to approve.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules. Second reading, yes.
All right, thank you. Got a motion from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 36 and move it to a second reading with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin and Alderman Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Now, Council Bill, second reading, Council Bill 36.
Council Bill 36, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri directing city staff to transfer the land known as Height Park located in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri as a part of the Cedar Crossing Development Project.
Thank you. Now we'll entertain a motion. Correct?
No.
Oh, just roll call, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 36 is now 3734. All right, so moving on to Alderman Committee reports. Alderman Mills, we'll start with you.
I'll just commend the Finance Department for another great year. So we've had many years and, many, many years I've been involved, and it continued to do well, so congratulations. I must say, though, the emergency services portion and the concern, that hasn't changed in 35 years. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thanks, Alderman Mills. All right, we will move on down to Alderman Chaney.
Same thing. I applaud our city for practicing sound financial responsibility, keeping the taxpayers' money where it's supposed to be. Great Fourth of July, thanks to the park and the city for continuing to do that. We've got youth football coming up. If anybody knows any third through sixth grade players or people sitting on the couch might want to get out and play, we are in a deficit of players, and we need some more. And that's about it.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Alderman Turner.
Had a good fourth, good turnout, a lot of people. There's, didn't see any problems, nothing, which is great. Everyone was well-behaved, fire show was great, again, other than that, that's it.
All right, thank you, Alderman Fauch.
No report.
No report. Alderman Dorhoff.
Just thoughts and prayers for all the families devastated in Texas, and it's all about God.
Yep, that's a sad one. Alderman Milner.
I have nothing, thank you.
And nothing from Alderman Milner. All right, city administrator.
All right. Harrisonville Alliance meeting is the 16th of this month. You'll probably be getting an email probably tomorrow from, Dennis is giving me that, I can't hear you. Damn. So Harrisonville Alliance will be the 16th, and you'll be getting an email on that to send an RSVP for that. South Service Area Sanitary Service Project still has some items that are outstanding on that, and I'll let you read all that. Then the James Street, the Blueberry Drive, Water Drainage Improvement Project, the engineer has issued a notice to proceed to GB construction for July 15th, so you'll be seeing a lot more on that project. Becker Night Stormwater Improvement Project is scheduled for, on before August 2nd to discuss the revised base bid to the contractor. Same thing for Ash Street, they have till the 16th to turn in their scheduled revised bid on the valued engineering plans and proposed schedule. The water treatment plant, the flying saucers were not real flying saucers, and they were actually the domes, and even though they looked like flying saucers. But we're actually really interested to see how that affects the algae clean that we always had to do every other month, and also I'm interested to see if we start hearing people say the water tastes different. So it'll be, we're just kind of interested to see how that comes out. The South Commercial Extension Project, we have the final plans to coordinate the potential utility relocations. The Anaconda Road vacation of the right-of-way, Sires surveying has been completed, right-of-way area to be vacated at the Missouri Northwestern Arkansas Railroad section. There's gonna be a public meeting on that on July the 21st. Then, again, just list out to you the streets for the asphalt program, and they're listed out there for you to review, as well as the curb gutter program as well. We did not get the MODOT grant, so we're moving forward with the project as is. Missouri Highway 2, we're still waiting on MODOT's A date request information, and that will be reviewed. Police Department, last year, if you all remember, at the range, their building had a water line break and damaged that building out there. It has been repaired, and then on the 28th of June, Sergeant Jacobs, Lieutenant Kincaid, members of the Hope City Church, and 4-H volunteers, because they utilize the range, so they volunteer as well, worked to perform, including landscaping and strong road ties, range edges, cleaning, organizing, painting, and painting in the training room, as well as trash cleanup. So Parks Department helped out a lot with the repairs and the cleanup, as well as Pub Works provided the skid surf for that day, getting that completed. So it's back up and going and ready to go. And then, as mentioned earlier, Fourth of July show at City Park went well, no major incidents, and it was on Channel 5.
Oh.
With that, Mr. Mayor.
That's it. All right. Questions from the media? Thank you for being here, sir. All right, yep, I'd just like to say, yep, good job, Parks Department, keeping the fireworks tradition going. That's a big deal. I know it was crazy out there, zero incidents, that's always good to hear. I always sit and sweat those things, because there's a lot of people out there, so, a lot of things that could go wrong there, we appreciate that. And again, thanks to staff, city administrator on their work with the audit. I know that's not easy to go through, I know there's, it takes time to provide the things that they're asking for, but when you get a report back like that, that really shows the due diligence and the care you all are putting into, like Alderman Chaney said, to manage the citizens of Harrisonville their money, so great job on that. Go ahead, yep.
I add one thing to that, with finance staff and everything, the auditors actually came in at the end of their audit and met with me because they wanted to know what I put in with my staff to get the federal grant lined out with the projects and streamed out the way that we have, because every city that they're dealing with does not have the information ready, or if they asked them for questions or documents, they would say, oh, let me see who might have that. And they said our staff had everything there, everything ready, everything was lined up, and they wanted to know how we did that, because none of their other cities are doing that. Sendora is a big part of that with the federal funds that works that. If I remind you all, that was the position that I came to you all and asked that we had when the Fed were doing what they were doing. I said if you get a key person to take care of the red tape and follow the money, you'll be able to get that money. And so Sendora does a bang-up job on the federal portion, and they came in just to ask me about the federal portion of how we did that.
And I'd like to add, too, I probably undersold it there, the amount of work that Kim puts into getting that audit through and off the ground. It's, she is the key point of contact there, and all the partners participate, they all go after what we ask for, and they get that promptly, and they know that this is an under-the-gun type thing, there's a timeline with this. And we have to say that KPM has been a good partner in this as well, so we've seen the improvement over the last few years from the audit standpoint, so we've been very happy with their partnership, we've worked really well with them, so, like I said, Sendora key on a lot of that stuff, and then, like I said, Kim really is that point person.
We appreciate it. Great job for everybody, for sure. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Milner to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're now adjourned. We'll take Grant, get to the front of the line, because I think you're talking, right?
Yes. Ready to go.
Are you ready to go?